Not for long. All right. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council, it is April 5th at 6:30 PM. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel and I'll preside at the meeting. At this time, I would call the meeting to order and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone. We'll call Councilmember Batcher.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Busch.
Here.
And Councilmember Sharpie.
Here.
All councilmembers are present. The agenda, are there any changes that anyone wishes to make? I do have one, but I'll open it up to anything else. Okay, I would like to move item I, that would be the approving the contract offer, conditional contract offered to Nathan Walton. I'd like to move that to new business so we probably hear a little more about the potential hire. And so we'll strike item I, move the three items below it up alphabetically. Are there any other changes in the agenda? During none, motion is in order to approve, or whoops, I guess I'll move ahead with the, approve the agenda as amended then, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Busch to approve the agenda with the one change. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. All right, the consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Item A, approval of the bills. Item B, approval of the March 15th, 2021 City Council workshop minutes. Item C, of the approval of March 15th, 2021 City Council minutes. Item D, approve a 12-month contract with Philip Mangus III for planning and administrative assistant coordinator position. Item E, accept grant for a car, from the Carl and Verna Schmidt Foundation in the amount of $4,500 for the Arlington ambulance. Item F, approve community facilities grant agreement for USDA rural development grant in the amount of $8,931 for fire department turnout here. Item G, approve the hiring of Mark Grove as an EMT with the Arlington Area Ambulance. Item H, approve hiring of Jonathan Gustavo Ruiz Moreno as EMT student with the Arlington Area Ambulance. Item I then, with the change that I indicated, item I would be accept resignation of EMT Leo Alejandro from the Arlington Area Ambulance. Item J, accept resignation of paramedic Chase Masters from the Arlington Area Ambulance. And lastly, item K, approve application for a one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Sibley County Agricultural Association. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Sharpie to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. City Administrator Newsom.
Well, we received a notice from Ridgeview their spring playing is happening May 7th and they're having a golf celebration on July 23rd. They have asked for, the letter was addressed asking for funding, the city cannot give money to that entity, we can't give donations. But I put it in as information.
Right, and I believe the, what you included in the packet left it open for individuals to.
If anyone individually would like to.
Communications?
We received notice from the city of Greenale that they are withdrawing from Community Ed. There's a joint powers agreement, Arlington, Greenale, Gaylord is all part of Community Ed and Greenale has decided to withdraw. Just some more information, they felt that they weren't getting their money's worth. They felt that there were not enough events happening in Greenale and it wasn't a hasty decision. I remember them speaking about it two years ago, three years ago when I was working for the city of Greenale as their EDA Director. Attorney Arneson, is there anything you wanted to add about Greenale?
Well, I think Greenale is willing to revisit the issue and I do plan to have a discussion with the new school superintendent once he's on board. And mostly it has to do with the summer rec program for the children. Greenale felt there wasn't really a lot of outreach effort made on the part of the school district the last couple of summers. Of course, last summer was the coronavirus issue, which pretty much canceled the program.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know how much money we're talking for those?
It's so much for Capodoc.
Their share, I think, wasn't it, wasn't it 4,000 something?
It was 4,000 something, I believe.
Was it like 10 or 15 or whatever?
I do not remember off the top of my head.
Do we know, is that, I mean overall costs or is that going to be divvied up with the two that are, that are in it?
Well, so I know like what the cities, what Greenale, Arlington and Gaylord put into, were put into the Community Ed, that does not cover.
The total.
It doesn't cover, it's just pretty much like a supplement for the program or whatever, if you want to call it that. So I don't, but I don't have the answer to your question whether we're picking up the...
The difference.
I don't think we change this our contract right now and I think it...
I think if I read the local paper that this, the topic would be taken up by the school board at one of their upcoming meetings.
The next meeting.
So.
So it's April 19.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that we are able to have some stuff with some devolve.
I, I think they're fine, now that restrictions are loosening up a little bit, I think there's more and more that are, that's being added, but it's been really hard. I mean, everything's been closed down, so you know, wanted to be, wanted to be open a little bit more, you know, month or so.
Yeah.
So I mean, to put things in place, I, I think it takes time myself personally, but people are ready to do stuff, kids are ready to be enriched and adults too through the programs and she used to do, they used to do a lot of things, adult programming as well, so.
Okay. Just keep going, the next thing in the packet is the public summary from MMPA. I'm a board member on MMPA, represent the city of Arlington and they always present the public summary, we're asked to keep everything confidential at the meeting, so they provide us with a public summary to pass along to our city councils. And they also provided the market activity. They've, that's something new they've started and I like including that in the packet for council to see as well. And then the next thing, I wanted to let you know that I've had a few complaints about Northland drying. One was from, and I'll, I will let you know who they came from. It was Mr. Miller complained about the trucks idling on Henderson, on Henderson. Matt Nelson is here, I believe he did put up some signs to remind trucks not to sit there and idle on Henderson Road.
That of course was probably during the evening hours.
It was during the evening hours, so they could not sleep.
Is there, is there a different spot for trucks to park? I mean, we can keep trying to battle, you know, potentially the inevitable, right? The trucker comes in, does he see the sign in the middle of the night, probably trying to, he or she's trying to stay warm or cold, you know, whatever. Is there just an alternative spot for them to, to wait?
Matt? Yes, please, make sure the button is on.
Microphone's on.
Yes, Matt Nelson with Northland Drying. I've talked it over with the chief of police and it's actually a couple of different things, it's kind of a double-edged sword. These employee, or these trucks aren't my employees, these trucks are people that are coming, that are, have purchased our product. So they're coming from Alabama, Texas, wherever. What's happening is they show up at 3 o'clock in the morning and we're not doing a loadout until 6, 7 o'clock in the night, that morning, so they sit there for a couple hours. We haven't been able to catch them and, you know, we've reached out to the trucking dispatcher to kind of kindly tell them, you know what, you can park behind on, on our gravel road, you can park back there, it's fine. Doesn't matter if it's winter, summer, the diesel trucks, they're going to leave them running, but if it's back there, it's not going to disturb anybody. I did, I got some signs that say no idling, we've put them on the side of the warehouse that's alongside Henderson that road there. There's also a sign that we put on there that said, you know what, respect our neighbors. You know, it's, keep it quiet, respect our neighbors. I talked with, with Chief Andrew and I, you know, I asked him, I said, you know, there's no law against it, but if your officers feel comfortable with it, they can, you know, and they talk with the driver, they're welcome to tell them, you know what, it's okay, they can park on our gravel road behind there. It doesn't even have to be a truck that's coming to us and I let them know that too. If there's somebody in town that's looking for a place to park their truck overnight, reach out to me, I'll find a spot for them that they can park over there.
I think that's what I was getting at, is that you can't control the driver, right?
Right.
So I mean, it's kind of, it's unfair to you guys to say, well, it's your problem, right? It's this driver shows up to get product, you know, should we just not have that be parking? Should they literally have to park, you know, in another area? That's, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at.
Sure.
Because it, I see it potentially just continuing to happen, you can't control everyone that comes there and these people are coming from all over the place, they've never been there and they pull up Google Maps and it says, well, this is where it's at, well, here's the street, I want to park there, you know, whether they see the sign or not. And sometimes maybe they don't see the sign.
And the signs haven't been there long-term, they've been there like a week. Had to call and order them and have them made up, so it took a little bit to get the signs, but the signs are there now.
Attorney Arneson, did you want to say anything, speak to chapter six of the city code relating to noise nuisances?
Yes, I did see, we do have a section in chapter six of the code that says that among other things, idling trucks after midnight are considered in violation of our nuisance ordinance and can be ticketed. And so I think I did send a copy of that to city staff the other day.
Yes.
And I can copy the chief on that. And while we obviously can't have a squad car parked on that street 24/7, perhaps, you know, if we ask the chief to focus on that area, at the very least, they can require any idling trucks to shut their engines down and if they don't comply, they can be ticketed. And if some of these truckers are on routine routes to the factory, the word is eventually going to get around and that may solve most of the problem.
Matt, does any raw product come in during nighttime hours?
Sure, but they're not parked on the street.
They're not, they don't.
No, that, that comes in and gets unloaded.
Okay.
Okay, and another complaint I had was from Mr. Brinkman, complained about the visible junk piles that you can see outside of Northland and I spoke to one of the owners of Northland about it and I know Mr. Brinkman also spoke to one of the owners about it, looking for suggestions on where they should start to clean up.
You may, are you, we talking about junk or, or product that falls off the truck?
Junk.
Junk, just junk junk.
To, to clarify, junk to one person isn't to the other. The stuff that's sitting out there that you can see is stuff that was inside that plant that has been moved out of the plant. A lot of it is being repurposed and brought in, a lot of it was cleared up last summer and it depends on what you're considering can be seen from the public. From Henderson Road, you can see a big blue tank and a hunk of metal. From our private road around it, then you can see the other things. In, in, in saying that, we've, we cleaned up a lot of it last summer, then winter came. Now, you know, things are drying up, lo and behold tomorrow, the next few days are talking, things are going to get wet again, which is good, we need the wet too. But over the next very short period of time, one of our tasks that is in the plan is to actually all of that stuff's going to be removed out of there and it's either disappearing or it's ending up inside one of the warehouses. When I say, and correction to that, the big tanks might not be moving, but they will be turned and set so they're nice and, and, and they look aesthetically pleasing, I guess.
All right. Thank you for addressing those.
Real quick, if I could, Mr. Mayor, because it's been a little while since I've been in front of you guys.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, well, right, right. It, it has been refreshing, I've popped in once in a while online, but it's good, not that I don't like seeing you guys, it's all right. But the invitation's still out there for the new council members, anybody that's been to Northland and wants to see it again, give me a call, I'll give you a tour, take you around, show you some of the things that we've changed, some of the things that we'll be changing this summer on it. I still have the open door policy, just give me a jingle and I'll try and help any way I can.
Would it make sense to you to try and get a group together rather than you taking, taking four or five individuals?
Can I legally take a group together?
I don't know.
I'd have to post it as a meeting.
Post it as a meeting.
It does, it doesn't bother me, I can bring you guys all through all together at one time if you want.
Just throwing it out as a possibility.
It might be better to take us all as a group, actually, so that you are all getting the same information at the same time.
Same time.
We just need to coordinate because I need to post it as a meeting.
Sure.
We can do that, I can work with Amy to make that happen. Right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on then to the reports, item A, People's Service Annual Report, Greg Stang and Lee Ortloff. And I don't know, the other gentleman?
We'll get to that.
Ah, there's an announcement, tell me again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Greg Stang, Region Manager, People's Service. Thank you again for the opportunity for our, to do an annual report, I like being face-to-face with the cities, you know. I know I've been here a little more often over the year, but a lot of times it gets to be here before I get to be here, so, thank you for that. With me as you know is Lee Ortloff and then we also brought the newest addition to our People's Service team in Arlington, it's Corbin Kickers is his name, Corbin just started with us in early March. I'll let him kind of introduce himself, Lee.
What is that?
I used to work at Seneca Foods in Glencoe for a number of years, like around the water and the wells and stuff, so I kind of seen this position open and the hours and the variety, it kind of intrigued me, so I applied and here I am.
All right, where's, where's home for you, where's your native?
Outside of Gaylord, well, it's between Gaylord and Winthrop, where Bernadette is, if you've heard of that?
Yeah.
Where the airport is.
Yeah, where the airport is.
Not too far away.
Yeah, no, we're excited to have Corbin on, he's got some good experience, he came with the water license already and stuff and he'll be upgrading his license as he's allowed to, that kind of stuff, so. The only other thing I'll hit on first before I turn it over to Lee and he can get more site-specific on things is, one of the things we are going to know as People's Service is Diamond Maps, it's called. What it is, is I don't have a fancy on the screen, but it's going to all, Diamond Maps is basically we, on our cell phones, like let's say we're flushing hydrants, every hydrant is going to be on Diamond Maps and we can pull it up on our cellphone and when they're flushing that hydrant, they can pull it up and they can flush hydrant on April 5th, whatever day they flushed it. So if somebody hit it with a vehicle or something, they can take a picture of it, say this hydrant was hit on this and that day, put it right in the Diamond Map file, you know, and then it was repaired on this and that day. All of our work orders that we do, everything is going to be done through Diamond Maps also. So it's new and upcoming, we're getting used to it, but it's been going pretty good. But it's, you know, I've been afraid of all its technology for many years and we just have to start grabbing on and going with it.
So, so is this, basically is it primarily your maintenance software that you're going to use or are you using it for logging in, tracking hours for yourself as well or?
No, not, not too deep into that at this time. We, we can, well not, we have GPS in our vehicles also, so we can do logging in that way. But it's, the main thing is going to be for starters, it's, you know, the mapping of the cities with the hydrants and all that, we can get like the sewer cleaning and all that, we'll be able to, as they're jetting the sewers, they're going to be able to jet the sewer lines, get that all documented and take pictures if we have to, again, you know, document with lots of sand in here, make sure we do this annually, you know, we can.
So you had, you had mentioned work order, so that got me thinking about, you know, you're track, you're tracking data through that system, so we would know what costs we're having associated or is that, was that a misconception?
No, I believe we would be able to.
Yeah, we're supposed to be able to.
Yeah.
We're using it as like an inventory plus standardizing throughout the company that everybody's doing the same way. Right now, you have a book, everybody, nobody fills the book out the same.
Yeah.
Some people don't and it ends up being a liability that if we have a sewer backup, where do you stand, you know, where this gives us the ability that, okay, this was jetted at this and this and this and we noticed some issues and had rags and whatever.
Yeah.
And that, the League of Minnesota Cities is accepting that as a good enough explanation or proof that we, we are doing what we're doing, you know.
Yeah, so if there's a sewer backup and they want our documentation, when was this cleaned last night, we can go on their Diamond Maps, print out the certain area, whatever, get, turn that into the league and then that's suffice for their records.
But it's detailed for each item, each hydrant, each manhole, we can put every curb stop, shut-off valve, in the streets, the houses, we can put anything and everything in there. Because a lot of times you come back to the city maps, they're not even correct and the maps here haven't been updated in many, many years with all the road projects, you know, so. So we're putting this together through the company and we're going to use it for the first time here, flushing hydrants, we've got the, the, the water, or water sites in place on it now, so I want to get more into it and I'll actually come up here and bring it up on the board and show you guys what it does and how you can click and see it.
Yeah, and as Lee mentioned, you know, curb stops, that kind of stuff, we'd be able to put on there, you know, that could help the locates go a lot faster. These maps are only going to be zacred as the input we put into them and, you know, we're starting with the hydrant sewer jetting, that kind of stuff because it's a, you know, because this is Google Earth is what generates this, you know, so we're able to like fill out a lot of the mandals and all that just from sitting at the desk, we don't have to be there, you can point, you know, you can get them on that map. Curb stops, we can't do that, they're going to take time to go out physically find them, you know, get a mark to that and it's going to be time-consuming, but ultimately it's a goal, but will it be done in the short term? No. But, yeah, no, that's kind of one of our new exciting things that we're going with and other than that, I'll let Lee take over on more items for town here.
So back, if you remember back when I first started, we're here, whatever, but when there was an issue at the wastewater plant where everything was like running and we have blowers that were so oversized that we shut them down and by shutting them down, we've been able to save the city $20,000 a year in electrical cost. That is still true today. I, I had the opportunity up in Winstead, that's a new wastewater plant that was built up there and it's the same issue there and Minnesota World Water has this program where they do free energy audits. So we did one up there and I talked about, well, let's come down to Arlington, I said it was kind of done, well, he didn't, was on the fence about it, but then decided to come down and we went to the plant. It's kind of amazing what we found and stuff that we could do. So basically, what was found is we could reduce the electrical costs out there another 35% of what it already is, it costs some dollars to do it, but, but that's what we found out. Because we took them big blowers and they haven't been used in over three years now or whenever we took them out of service and we're using blowers that were made for the digesters, they're smaller and that. And so on that page up there on the bottom is for the, the chart on the bottom is for the digester blowers, they are not hooked into the SCADA system and we have a cost estimate of what that would be to do that, that's, that's one option. That's option two and on top was option one. On option two, there would be a 15% reduction in savings and you can see the payback, how long it would take, there's not that much cost to it and, and that's using existing equipment there just to get it to save energy. Because if you can control the speed of the, they got variable speed drives on them and if you can control that speed, you're going to save money because at night you don't have a load on the plant, the DOs, dissolved oxygen, we call it DO, is way high and it's just a waste of electricity. We, we, we turn it up and down a few times a week to, to take up the load coming into the plant, but it can go a lot farther. The other option that was discovered was to take and remove one of them old blowers, sell it, find out they're only worth like $2,500, they got about $10,000, $12,000 hours between the three of them and anybody interested in says it's got enough hours that it needs to be rebuilt, so they don't want to pay you very much for them, but it is something. So we're looking at replacing the blower with a, it's a three-lobed instead of a two-lobed rotary blower and it still uses the same motor, we would use the existing drives that we have and then that cost is up, up there, $45,104 to replace the blower and install it, but with that we'd get a $10,000 rebate, $10,080. The reason the rebate is that high because of the demand that is put on that, we'd be saving over 100,000 kilowatts a year by doing this with that blower. That is enough power, that is enough energy to power 10 homes. So, and once you get over that 100,000 dollar mark, that's where you get the $10,000 plus rebate, so.
So when you mentioned the VFD, so there's a VFD on it already?
Yep.
So when I look at this bottom one here, it's, you know, I always look at the quickest payback, so that one right there is less than a year, it seems to be a no brainer. So we're talking about, you know, adding, basically automating the existing blowers, so that's going to, you know, it's going to ramp it down by itself.
Yep, tying it, tying it into the, it's not tied into the SCADA system. So that, that's one option and then the other, and that's at a 15% savings and then the option up on top, that would be a 35%, but you're going to have to spend more money, but you, you would, it is a longer payback.
Yeah, when you lower down, it, that's the energy is massive.
Well, this, by replacing that other one, that, that blower would be only, only running at a third of the speed, they can handle that low speed, that's the problem that we're having, everything out there is so overbuilt. Yep, we can't get it turned down. So when we built the plant, it was just so oversized and then if we could sell one of the blowers, that's fine, but we'd still have to keep, because you don't know down the road, we might have some industry come in, we might be needing it then and, and they're going to pay for that, you know, at that time, it'll be a significant industrial user and they'll have a fee to pay for that, so. But this is all free, there was no cost to this, it was interesting of what could be done, you know, and into the plan to make it run more efficient, so.
So the lights inside, are they on all the time or do they shut off off the radio?
No, the lights are on inside?
Yeah.
They're off, they're on, and they're also on a timer, if nobody's there, they just shut off.
They do shut off.
Yeah, but at night, everything's off inside.
There's no motion sensors to?
On the inside there are, inside the plant.
So they do shut off based on motion?
Yep.
Our reading?
My reading. So and then part of the, part of the package in here too that was put in was Kirby, last year had an energy audit, we're changing everything to LEDs, they just added this on to the blower project here as savings, so. One of the things we did, there's, there's two blowers there and they all had different sized pulleys on them and we don't know why, but we changed all of them around and with that, we are, we can turn one, one of them down, five numbers on the, from 35 Hz or... Yeah, we're running at 40 and we're running at 30, 35. Yeah, we're running at forty, and we're running at thirty, thirty-five to thirty-one, thirty-two now with it, just by changing pulleys around, so we found some in- instant savings, just by.
You're talking to the average of them by changing pulleys, you know?
Yep, by changing pulley, yeah, we're using less amps. And a lot of the stuff is, is too, is just educating to, isn't, isn't so bad here, but if you had XL Energy, you get the demand charges you got. So when it comes to running all the plant equipment, cause we got maintenance programs, where we turn all blowers on, and we run everything, exercise everything. That to run that stuff with the generator running, so when you're putting that load on the plant, then you won't see that demand, because you, that demand charge will grow. For a whole year, month after month, all it takes is fifteen minutes of runtime, you know, putting a lot of amps and you pay for that. So, some of the stuff we're learning and trying to not to have, so. But it's a, it's a really, it's a pretty complete report of what, what was all done in there. I mean, it's for your information, you can look at it, decide if we wanna do anything, at a minimum. I would recommend doing the DO control on them back blowers.
Yeah, I think so.
That's a short payback, and it, it, it's relatively cheap, two thousand dollars is, is done.
We'll bring this up again at the AGI wastewater meeting, because this is money that comes out of the AGI fund, so the board as a whole should make the recommendation to.
One thing to think about, when you run the drive so low, that, that motor's not spinning so much, so the fan doesn't.
There is a minimum they always recommend on blowers, pumps, any of that, you cannot go below a certain hertz.
And they're easily programmed into the drive, so you can't.
And, and, and that's, and that's the problem we were having with the big blowers, we could not achieve that. We, we, they were, when I started here, they had every, every point in erasure, it was being aerated. And everything was at the saturation point of the dissolved oxygen, basically, as much air dissolved oxygen as in air, you know? And that was just one blower, and that was running at eighty-five percent, now a hundred percent open, that's how oversized the plant equipment is. So, and that was the point of put, replacing one of the blowers, cause this other blower, it's a Kaiser blower that they have in here, that. Instead of having two loads, these are rotary load, two loads, there's three loads, and that motor can turn way, way down, that's where the savings is. You know, but you're gonna have to spend money to do it, you know, so.
That's not fair, I mean, four years, it's.
No, cause that plant's gonna be there a long time, and then we just pretty much, run that blower nonstop for whatever, and then if something happens, we got the other ones as backup. The ones that, that were currently being used, and, and then if we got industry that comes to town, you got the, the old blowers that still work, and so. So on that page there, that's, that was the estimate that was put together, they had two options, option one is on top, that's where the variable speed drive and everything. The bottom one is option two is just a blower package, it's a self-contained unit, and we would use our existing drive. So that is the price of the equipment there, plus the install, and that's on the next page. Yep, that's, that's to install it, the piping, con- put it on a concrete pad and insulate it. You'd pu- you'd wanna insulate it, there, you can actually a hundred and eighty degrees come out of these blowers, you don't want somebody touching that pipe, they'll get burned, so.
You know what the work, the existing horsepower is, like the one that they're recommending?
Everything is forty horse, everything's the same, yeah, so. The next picture would be, is the blowers that we're talking about in use right now. So that page is the difference between the two bul- blowers that we have currently with the, those, yeah, you can scroll down. That, that's the blowers that are currently running right now, and that's, on the page up above, that's where we were doing the amp draws and RPMs and stuff, it tells about the pulleys being different. And, and there's a fifteen percent difference between the speeds of them blowers, and we've, we've, we've corrected that problem already, so we have a little savings there, so. That's the cost estimate for, for, uh, putting the DO control onto them, them blowers. Tying it into the SCADA system. That's just, yeah, talking about, uh, torque and amp draw, so. And then that, that gets into Kirby report with the LED lighting that was done earlier in the year, like I said, they just put that in there for, uh. To add, cause there's savings there, to, to make their, their thing look a little better.
What kinda lights are currently in there, just like four foot fluorescents?
Yeah, ha- half the, half the outside lights have been changed to LED, none of the interior is, everything's all, we've changed some lights out, LED, but. All the fluorescent lights in the ceiling are still.
What, what we did was we just stopped stocking the bulb, so when the bulb went out, then we.
That's what, that's what we have been doing, yeah. And then, yeah, that's your savings, changing everything over.
So, so changing the LEDs, were they gonna change the fixtures, or was it just gonna be bulbs, or?
I don't, how, they must be.
By the time, what we do is we just take, we take the, uh, the ballast out, and I'm buying, you know, ones that have the driver built into them, so then we just. I'm just wondering if you know what that, is that, when that cost was for it, is it just, is that what they're planning on, you know?
Replacing all the pictures probably.
That was the second part, yeah, it was replacing all the pictures, out, inside, outside, everything to LED, so. So when we talk about the blower, that's what, this, this was for your information, it's a Kaiser blower, and it's a package just like that, it would end up sitting on a cement slab and then hooked to the pipe, and. It would be contained, right now there's no containment, they just loud and roar out there, if you've ever been out there and heard them run. So that, that, that's actually insulated and quiet, but like I said, that's got three loads in it, and, and, and they run super slow, you can turn them way down and get the same amount of power out of them. So, that's, that's what they're recommending to put in, so, this is, that's just a s- brochure about them, so.
There are school colors too.
Yeah, we better do it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, like I said, I think that was, I think that's pretty interesting, it's, it's some food for thought, it, um, there was no charge for that, so. There's some defens- definitely some electrical savings there, I know back when we did, um, the plant. The U of M was out, they call Mintap or whatever, and they did the energy audit then, and that's when we reduced all that power, and they were doing this all over, um. Minnesota, I can't remember the number, if it was thirteen percent, or it was more, all electricity produced in Minnesota goes to power wastewater plants.
Well, you were shocked, you know, money that you, that you could save just by scaling back what we needed, instead of running it wide open.
Mm-hmm, well, it was a difference, it was a difference back then between raising rates, because you were gonna render these rates, and we found that, we didn't have to then.
So who, who was doing the rebate, since?
It would come through the city, through the, um.
The power company does the rebates, they supply them, yeah.
But, yeah, eventually that comes through the power company. So on our monthly report, um, one of the things that I, I see with not on here is that, um. I, I don't remember, I mentioned before, but we're, we have one radio read water meter left to change out at the movie theater, it's scheduled to be done, we had to get plumber, cause of the. It's got a leaky valve in front of the meter, and it should be scheduled this week, and all water meters are on auto reads, so that job is completely finished. So, it's been a while, but it's, there's always, gets to the end, it gets hard, trying to catch people home and stuff and coordinate. So, um. Yeah, so, so when you go back to them graphs, you can see that the INI is still staying down, and you can see. What was pumped and that's in water, and then the bottom is your, your wastewater, we'll see what happens now, you see how it jumped up in March of last year? But we are lower, it, it was a dry, you know, dry winter, not a lot of snow and stuff, so. The ground actually dried out, so it went away, so those are actually two hard numbers of what the flow is between the two cities coming here. It ain't that far off from what your, uh, um, water flow is coming, you know, you're pumping, almo- almost like last month, in February, a hundred ninety gallons, and you're just over two hundred thousand in the wastewater, so. That, that's probably the difference between Green Isle coming over here, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, so those are some good numbers, and we'll see where it goes, and then you can, if you scroll up to the next page, you can see. Same thing, Green Isle, but it, it's just like last ye- year, it, it's almost identical to Arlington, so it's coming from the lift station there. That's, I think that's kinda fascinating, we'll see how that jumps up, and then when we start getting this rain, they say we're gonna get a couple in- inches now here.
Next couple of days.
The next couple of days, I, I have a feeling that with that Clinton Avenue pr- project that was done, we, we, we found something. Pretty major over there on the INI coming in, cause it seems to have really reduced after that, you know, so.
This is kind of a long ways from where I remember it starting, just hundreds of thousands of gallons, to you're talking maybe twenty, thirty.
Yep, it's coming down, so. So.
It's great.
Okay, so, that's just from reviewing of the months from the, comparing the months before, it's the same thing. So, on to hydroengineering, the well, the well two is in very good shape, the only thing wrong with it, it's got holes in the pipe, is why it was doing what it was doing. So, so I'm glad we did that, um, they said there was no reason to televise it, so he came up with a whole nother estimate, let's just start over, where we were at, had everything together, a true estimate, no televising. Or anything of it, and this is total cost to have that well fit back in. He said one thing surprising to him is that the, the bottom of it, the pump is solid brass, he said he's never seen one solid brass. So, he said that thing will last forever, there's no wear on the pump itself, they're gonna install new wear, uh, new bearing on it, new wear rings in the bowls, they're gonna replace. Um, I think eighty or a hundred feet of pipe, whatever was in the water, that's where it was bad, and they're gonna use a thicker steel on it, so it should last longer. And then reinstall it, and it should be good to go, so we, we already approved partial price on it, and this is total, so we're asking for approval for the rest of this.
For the rest.
Then the, the well should be done, and should last for many, many, many years again, so. We're looking for approval to go ahead with it.
Okay, so something we would do now?
Yep, we need motion.
So I, I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the difference, uh, from what was already approved to what it takes for.
To finish it.
To finish it, yeah.
And that amount is seven thousand three hundred fifty-three, I believe, eighty-nine hundred was approved already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion by council member, motion by council member Morgan, seconded by council member Batchor, to approve the additional amount for well number two. Uh, mounting to seven thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars, and that will completely rebuild that well then for future use. Is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose no, motion carried. Okay. One question before I forget, I know you touched on a little bit, uh, previous about, uh, fire hydrants. I know we have some concern from the fire department, uh, after a few incidents where they ran across fire hydrants that were insufficient. As far as volume of water to even tap into, uh, I believe it was at the end of Main Street, there was an issue down there. In visiting with you folks about that issue, uh, it came up that there were, in the other parts of town, I'm thinking more towards the fairgrounds. There were also some fire hydrants that were inadequate for fire departments to hook onto, have they been marked, so that if our fire department has a call out there? Or if the Gaylord Fire Department comes over, uh, for mutual aid, that they know that they cannot use those, you know, those, uh, fire hydrants. Could you comment on that, please?
Yeah, the fire chief brought that to my attention, the, the stuff that was on the wo- wo- east end of the Main Street was some, broke, it was a broken valve. And, and as, it was a year ago when Amy started here, it was like April, I think, when it got warm enough, those valves were replaced, we ended up replacing. Three valves over there, yeah, we had one break, started leaking water when we were turning it back on, the bonnet, the bro- bolts came off of the bonnet on it. Started pumping water out, so that issue was resolved, and then John let me know last year of another one, they were doing some work out by the hide, the fairgrounds. Um, pumping water out there, and we did find, we went checking valves, and we found a valve closed out there, it was on, 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 um.
Chandler.
Chandler, yeah, the intersection going into the fairgrounds there, so, there's been numerous times that there's been work done, well, you, you live on that street. Yeah, somewhere that valve was not, got opened back up, whoever was here working on it at that time. So, all valves are open that we know of, and that's a good thing too, like with this diamond maps thing that, like Greg was talking about. We, we, we can document all them and the conditions of these valves, so. And then, cause that's another one of the concerns you had too, not even, only that, but. How, and Greg's here too, he can help too, answer about, he talked about marking hydrants, so, you know, the fire department knows what size main they're on, you know?
What about neighboring fire department, so?
Yeah, cause I don't know what other communities do with that, do you have any idea, Greg?
So the firemen, when they hook on the.
So they, they know they're on like a t- ten inch, or instead of a four inch or something, you know, line.
Sometimes they have actually different colored caps on, kinda tells them the main size.
I think that's one, was hinted about using that method, here, and I'm just wondering if anything like that happened, though.
No, and that's something that needs to be discussed, how, how, how should we approach it, do we wanna paint caps on? I've seen some with numbers on the hydrant, but they're, they're not gonna last, the hydrants are gonna fade out and rust, be repainted and, you know?
Has there been in-town here flow testing done? Sometimes ISO rating, people, they wanna do the town, you know, so. The ISO is for the insurance for everybody in town, but once you do that, you could go off the flows, and then you could do the, instead of the main size, just the flows what you're getting out of the hydrants. At a full tower, I guess you'd have to say, because if it's only half, you know, flows change from full tower to empty tower, the flows are gonna be quite a little different, so.
I imagine if we have a map, and we shared it with the fire department, they could share it with the other fire departments that come in, so that they have a map as well.
Well, and.
So they know, and they can identify those different.
And that's what.
If they're not working right, they should be capped or something, we also talked about.
Right, right, we do, yeah, and, and that's one thing too, like with this mapping thing, cause it's, it's using Google Maps that. Maybe we can just make them a different color or something on the map, and then send them a map.
Okay.
You know what I mean, with all the different colors for different things on there, and with the legend on it saying, this is four inch, six, eight, that might be a, a good way to do that. And then they can share that and post that and have that in the home, that would, that would work, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that would.
That would be good, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
And then lastly, there's the, uh, consider renting a John Deere tractor for Lester, from Lester, no, to Lester Prairie.
Yeah, look, we're, we're having a hard time trying to rent a tractor for up in Lester Prairie to haul out their bile solids. And it was just, it's just a thought that you guys have a tractor here that we use, it only gets used for one purpose, and do it, it's doing that in the fall of the year. And wondering if there was any interest to renting it, renting it out this spring to Lester Prairie to use, so they can get theirs hauled out. There's no tractor inventories out there right now, you know, the, the, like, they say that like a lot of the farmers that got a lot of COVID money or whatever, stimulus money, and. There's no equipment, it's all bought up, there, nobody will lease, so it'd only be just this one time, you know, to help them out, so.
And it would be run, run by staff from Lester Prairie?
It'd be ran by me and one guy from up there, in Lester Prairie, nobody else will, will, will run it. And, um, we're talking eighty dollars an hour, we'll probably put forty hours on it, and one of the things that, um. Is, is we got in budget to put new tires on that, tires are gone, gone up, I, we, we got price for tires on it. To put in the budget for last year, they've gone up a thousand dollars, I talked to a guy today, over, and, and there's no tires, all the inventory is, it's just like buying a couch, I guess. And he said that there's one set, set of rear tires for, you know, for four tires up in Bismarck, North Dakota right now, there's nothing available. So, he says you better hurry at that, and, well, yeah, I'm gonna get two quotes, and then, then he, and then the other guy, he's got the front ones and not the backs, and then I'm getting them from, it's just a mess.
Would, would there be any insurance taken or just in case something were to happen with it while it was up there to protect us?
How would that work on that? Well, did it have to be agreement between the cities for one, you know?
But as part of that, I think what Michelle means is the legality for a rear driving tractor on Lester Prairie time, and if you hit someone.
Mm-huh. Mm-huh.
I believe that's all covered with the people's service, uh, contract, that we operate other city equipment also, you know, like the super jet or that kind of stuff, we get back into it, you know, it's, whether it's the Lester Prairie employee or Arlington employee, that'd be covered the same way.
Well, I, I was talking about the equipment itself, I mean, what happens if something happens to it while it's being around the world?
Mm-huh.
Like.
I mean, just a break, a breakdown or whatever?
A breakdown or something like that.
Yeah, a breakdown, dude.
Starts on fire.
Well, well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, nothing probably is gonna happen to us, I mean, because it's only a thing, what have you, but something can happen. So, if it doesn't happen while it's here.
Right. Right, right. Mm-huh. Mm-huh.
I guess that's the only thing that I was thinking about is, you know, probably, I, I don't wanna take a loss, might not be able to track it.
Yeah, it would be nice if there was some sort of an insurance policy for the unit. I don't think we probably insure it, but if there was insurance on the value of it, then it, you know, if it, like I said, it gets stolen, it gets lost, it falls off the trailer on the way, um, you know, we get some money back to then try to find a tractor.
Mm-huh.
This is, you know, forty-four, fifty-five.
Mm-huh.
And, so I know typically when I would rent a tractor from John Deere, I would be paying about a hundred and fifty, and that's what, a hundred and sixty horse tractor?
Hundred and forty, yeah.
Yeah, so usually about that frame size and chassis, you're right in that one fifty to one eighty, I think, from the last time I rented from Midwest. And then I know that part of their hook on me renting a tractor from them is that if the motor blew, I had to fix the motor.
Mm-huh.
And that was excluded on the rent. If you bend the rim, you're on the hook for the rim. Basically, if anything were great, me renting the tractor, I would have to fix, fix it, so.
I would feel comfortable if we had that. And if we have that in place, then yeah, absolutely.
We'll work with Amy on getting something to cover to save.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, mhm.
Can agreement placed?
Yeah, right, right.
So then we'll, uh, we'll act on that agreement once it's put, comes before the council, is that right?
Okay, then immediately.
Um, I don't know.
Yesterday?
Yesterday. We could start hauling after April first, and, and, I mean, we, we need to be done by probably May first with it, so farmer can get in the field.
So, is that enough time if we're very contract backed to April nineteen, twenty, or?
Ooh.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
It'll probably be late.
I think I would be fine if, I mean, you, you figure it out, the parameters that we've been talking about, then I'm okay with that, and.
Yeah, I think just try to make sure the city's covered.
Right, so I mean, I can make a motion, so we create.
Just authorize administration?
And to have admin, um, negotiate the contract with, um, with the tractor.
Okay, the motion then is to authorize administration to, uh, work out a contract with the City of Lester Prairie for the rental of the, uh, John Deere tractor from the City of Arlington. Is there a second? Motion by council member Batchor, second by council member Thomas, to authorize the administration to work out a, uh, rental agreement with the City of Lester Prairie for the rental of the John Deere tractor. The, the cost here is eighty dollars, I don't know if that's something you wanna stick with, or?
That's whatever you guys want.
Okay.
I'd like to maybe get a quote for a hundred and forty horse tractor. I know we can't quite compare apples to apples with a thirty-five year old tractor, however, to me, a hundred and forty horse is a hundred and forty horse. And I believe that one's a front wheel assist too, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. So.
Okay, let's, how about wording it that the, uh, the rental price is negotiable?
Mm-huh, yeah.
All right, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Pose no, motion carried. All right, anything else, gentlemen?
I think that's all we have, any questions for us?
All right, any questions for people's service personnel?
We took up enough time.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Kim.
Thank you guys for the opportunity.
You're welcome.
We'll see some of you first.
Batchor and Thomas.
Yeah.
All right, item B, March Public Works Department, Dan Hughes, would you come forward? Good evening, Dan.
Hello, uh, thank you for having me.
Mm-huh.
It's not gonna be as technical as all that. So, um, not, not much snowfall last month, you know, we had the one big snowstorm, um, so we called out the graders and the trucks. And, uh, because we didn't have much snowfall, we, uh, we did some shop improvements. We, uh, put up some pallet racking to make, you know, to utilize, utilize the, you know, upspace for storage. Um, we, uh, constructed a ten by twenty office space, um, gets pretty dusty in there, so desk or coffee cups full of dust all the time, so we needed something to kind of keep us from the elements. Uh, it's a little bit warmer in there too, um, that, we got a b- building permit to do that, and it's already constructed. Um, you know, did a lot of shop cleanup, um, the, you know, less trips hazards, things like that, uh, just making the shop space more efficient, uh, for, you know, better organization, so that when we're looking for stuff down there, you know, we know exactly where it's at. Um, see, I've been, uh, been spending a lot of time in a street sweeper, um, getting used to that machine, uh, you know, I'm pretty new to it, so. Getting acclimated to how it's driving, uh, it's, it's fun, I like to, like to do the street sweeping. Um, you know, we've had pretty windy days last couple of weeks, so a lot of branches down, a lot of garbage, you know, we're just doing spring cleanup. Kirby's been, uh, working a lot, doing, uh, cold patching on all the potholes, uh, some pretty bad streets around, got some pretty good potholes in them, so he's, he's working on the cold patching, and, um, they said that there's some bad descaling on the top layers, um, I don't, I don't know much about that, so you'd have to, any questions for that, you'd have to ask Kirby. Also, up on the Main Street, uh, we've been dealing with, uh, numerous underground wiring issues with the lights, uh, I don't know if you see them flickering and stuff like that, I know McLeod's been out a couple of times working on them. I don't, they're chasing it, so I don't, I don't know exactly what they're, you know, what's wrong with them. Uh, Kirby's been, uh, getting, uh, lots of, uh, or getting the bids for the seasonal street work and meeting with contractors. Um, and, and I've been pretty busy up here at the community center with the increase, you know, with more events happening, things like that, and everything opening, you know? Some minor fixes up here, we had a furnace in here that wasn't working, there was a motherboard that had to be replaced, um, other than that, nothing unusual up here, just pretty much basic maintenance. So, looking ahead, you know, for April and stuff like that, we're going to be continuing street cleanup and, you know, on all this, uh, get all the streets clean, all the properties, the parks, things like that. Uh, doing the maintenance on the, the mowers and the weed, uh, weed eaters and the chainsaws, so we can get ready for tree removal, um, you know, getting ready to mow the parks and things like that. Um, we're gonna grade alleys and, uh, burn the, the compost pile, and that's, that's pretty much it.
It's a big, big pile to burn, I'll tell you that, I was.
Yeah, it's a big one out there, so.
That's huge. It's huge.
Do we have a week for that? I think there was like, uh, kind of burning hole.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll let it tomorrow.
Right, yeah, no, yeah, we have to wait.
It'll end tomorrow, yeah. Yeah, I know he does, it's pretty critical that he waits for, of course, no burning ban, but then the wind, the right or in the correct direction too, which should, so.
Excellent job, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you, thanks, Dan. Hey, item C, uh, March Ambulance Department report. Jamie, welcome?
Good afternoon, evening, it's lovely outside, yeah, like I suggested before, we should just have this outside.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
Um, as far as the ambulance, uh, report goes, on March, I believe it was March seventh, yes, I was able to work with the Girl Scout troop to help them with their first aid badges. And that actually went really good, we spent a couple hours and we had a really cool picture in the paper regarding that, and just a quick write-up on that, but that was, I think that was a lot of fun, it was pretty well received for those that participated.
How many girls were involved in that?
There were four, and then.
Miana, I think, was in one too.
I, that's why I asked for a number, 'cause if they'd have said three, I would've known which one wasn't there.
No.
The ring really liked, well, they loved it, it was really cool, they really enjoyed it.
Good. Good.
And they got their CPR certification, right?
Uh, I think.
They had first aid.
The first aid badge, yep, yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun.
So, I mean, they loved it, I mean, I think they really liked it.
Good, yeah, I mean, not a problem. Um, like I said, it was pretty well received, and they were very, um, interested in what, uh, EMS has to do with the Girl Scouts and what they can learn from it and what we can learn from that, and it was, it was a lot of fun, I think, uh, they enjoyed it.
Do you think that that would be something that potentially we can partner with the school or and or with maybe community education to do some things like that?
Absolutely, yes.
Get some good community outreach there and.
Yes.
And potentially maybe some interest at parties to.
Yep.
EMT or?
Absolutely, uh, Amy and I had talked a little bit about that too, she had had given me the task to kind of do some research in regards to, uh, seeing if there were other, you know, organizations and schools that would be interested in doing something like this, and that would be potentially on the horizon, since EMS week is coming up in May. Um, they do focus a lot on different types of EMS education, and, uh, so that's definitely one avenue that I'm looking at to reach out to those organizations and schools to see if they'd be interested in that as well.
Is there an age limit or requirement for your first aid?
Not that I'm aware of, for general first aid and CPR, I think everybody should be certified in some sort of basic first aid and CPR. Um, as far as EMT things go, uh, it is unfortunately have to be the age of eighteen in order to, you know, go after the certification, but, no, it's.
I was thinking more of that first aid, first aid. So, you could get like fifth grader, sixth graders in there and?
Yeah, essentially, yeah, we could definitely work on that. I think it's vital information, yeah, I know, I completely agree. But other than that, um, nothing really, really important on the, the forefront for the ambulance side of things, like I said, I just mentioned the whole EMS week is coming up here in May. Um, the N E T and then the, uh, another organization, they do an annual kind of, uh, bruhaha, so to speak, for EMS providers. And I believe that this year's theme is EMS caring for the communities, so it's kind of runs in conjunction with the, the COVID response and educating our communities too, and what they can do, anything from CPR to stop the bleed and all that jazz. So, um, I would welcome any and all suggestions as far as what the council would like to see us do for EMS week, or if they have any ideas, or even community members, um, drop me a line, send me an email. I'd love to find different fun ways to show our support to our local EMS providers, um, not only for the City of Arlington, but also to recognize other EMS services as well for what they do, especially in the forefront. So, I think it's very important. But yeah, I welcome all suggestions, so drop me a line, let me know. Um, other than that, you guys saw that we were able to obtain some funding from the foundation to kind of move forward with our EPCR, and so I was just gonna bring that up and see what we can do.
Back to the EMS part, is that, is that something that we could set a dollar sign on, is that an option? You know, let's say there was a thousand dollars to do something, um, just.
Appreciation.
Appreciation, is that, is that an option, do you know?
Is there money in her budget?
There's not money in her budget to do something like that.
Well, how about the general fund?
We'd have to transfer, it, it would still have to come out of the ambulance, so it would still come out of her budget, I guess, if we were over, we'd have to transfer from the general fund if you for her.
There were a few.
How, how many, you, how, how big is the group?
Go ahead. There's twenty of us, and there were a few things that I was just going to do as a big thank you to the crew for doing everything that they do too, as far as feeding them and getting them swag and things like that, so. That was something that I was just gonna do on my own, kind of thing.
And we can put something on the electronics, you know, about EMS week, and an email from the council members is free, I think that goes a long way of to let everyone know.
Yep.
Yeah.
How much you appreciate them.
Yep, very much so.
It doesn't have to cost us a lot for this.
Okay, so what you're looking for is approval of the, to go ahead with the Dell rugged extreme tablet, tablets?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
At a cost of forty-one, sixty-six, twenty-eight?
Yep.
Okay. Would someone?
I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase the Dell, uh, Extreme.
Second.
Motion by council member Morgan, second by council member Batchor, to, uh, approve the purchase of the Dell EMC, uh, EMC for two Dell rugged Extreme tablets in the amount of four thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. And this is, uh, paid for from, uh, grant from the Schmidt Foundation. Is there additional discussion? Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose no, motion carried.
Definitely just say that it, you know, great job, obviously it took work to, to file for the, um, grants, but definitely worth the wait.
Mm-huh, mm-huh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, concerns?
The two new, uh, members, I was looking through, trying to see if they're, you know, they're joining, and a lot of times, some of the folks are, you know, out of town, some of them are in town, um, can you say anything about where they're, where they're from?
Um.
The two that will be joining?
Uh, Mark, uh, he comes from the Norwood, Young America area, he actually works with another one of our EMTs, um, and was referred to by him as well. Uh, he seems like a pretty good fit, uh, the, the references that I've, I've called upon, um, I think he'll do well, I really do, he really has a passion and a drive for EMS, and to give him that opportunity, I think, will really benefit the service. Um, the other individual, he has also kind of that passion and drive as well, but he doesn't have the certification, um, so we would like to extend that opportunity for him to obtain that EMT certification, uh, through our program that we have through the city.
In that person's local, or?
Yes.
Does it sound?
Yep.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Yes.
Item D, February building reports.
Attached, our Eiffel High, the mayor, you'll see the February building reports, you'll see all the right-of-way permits that were granted to MediaCom. For your information, Frontier is doing something similar to what MediaCom is doing and doing some upgrades in town as well, they happened to come into the city asking where they could park their drilling machine, and I said, what are you doing? And who are you doing that for? Said, you know, you need a permit, so they applied for a permit, and we collected their four hundred and ninety-five dollars as well.
Good.
So, that'll be next month's report.
All of that work is, hopefully will pay off in much better internet service to the city.
Mm-huh.
Um, question on, uh, when, when someone applies for a permit, whether, no matter what it's for, if they under the contract or if they have none listed. What, what is, what is our oversight as far as them bringing in someone that maybe is unlicensed? Who, who checks that?
Darren should be checking to make sure that they are licensed, and I spoke to someone from the state.
And I spoke to someone from the state once. Someone did slip through who was not licensed and the state caught it and gave us a call. And he gave us a website to look at to make sure that everyone's licensed and reminded us to make sure that we check that people are licensed. Otherwise, some that are doing, they're on rough and they're on work on their hands, they sign a waiver stating that they're doing the work themselves.
So, but if, if Darren gets the permit application and is, there's none listed under contract and the homeowner is not doing it themselves, is he, is Darren the one that would?
He should be checking.
He should be catching it then.
Well, I mean, like when MediaCom is pulling it, they're not having a contract because they're doing, they're their contractors, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I'm talking about roofing jobs or siding jobs or windows or whatever. I mean, there's a purpose for someone being licensed and that is to certify that they're qualified and have taken some basic education. Okay, so Darren would be the one running it. All right, thank you. Any questions on the building report? Anyone? All right, move on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution nineteen dash twenty-two-one, a resolution accepting a donation and designating its use. City Administrator Newsom?
This first one was from Terry Clegus for a hundred dollars towards the dog park. I'll introduce our resolution nineteen twenty-two-one, a resolution accepting a donation and designating its use, five dollars for Terry Clegus, word of consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution nineteen dash twenty-two-one, introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Thomas, and that is a donation from Terry Clegus for one hundred dollars and that is to go towards a dog park. Discussion, questions? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Bus?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie?
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed. The resolution is adopted. Resolution twenty dash twenty-two-one, another resolution accepting a donation designating, designating its use.
Very similar to the last one. This one's a thousand dollars from Denise Swenson.
How would you do this resolution twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one? A resolution accepting a donation and designating its use, a thousand dollars from Denise Swenson for that dog park.
Second?
Second.
Whoop. Who wants it? Matt? Resolution twenty dash twenty-two-one, a resolution accepting a donation and designating its use, that, that being a thousand dollar donation from Denise Swenson for, to be put towards the dog park. And that was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Sharpie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bus?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed. Resolution is adopted. Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two-one, a resolution approving the water softener upgrade building permit waiver.
This is something we had talked about either the workshop or the fire council meeting. We're coming up with a program to waive the building permit fees for someone who wants to upgrade the water softener. It's a good way for us to get started to encourage those who want to implement a water softener to go ahead and do so. It's fifty-one dollars otherwise for the permit and it usually won't come through for new water softeners. So it's an incentive and it's something that I would like to encourage Greenhouse to do as well when we need for our A G M to do this week.
Good idea.
And feel free to maybe change this.
Yeah, it looks like you've got, yeah, like you've got some...
Got some information on there, basically the requirement of the water softener, which is good.
We are, ultimately are allowing, helping with the language for him. He, he helped me with the language. I'm not a water softener expert.
What, just while we're on it, one, where do you go with an old water softener that you want to dispose of? How can we make that easy for the person also, I guess, is what I'm thinking?
Well, if you purchase one in town, I'm sure that like Clacko or Wyon would take the old one, right?
They take the old one?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So if you hire it out, it's just those ones that are going to be the DIYers?
Mm-hmm.
That, the nards or...
Well, they, they could drive it to Spruce Ridge. You, you can, you can pay by, well, there's a minimal payment as far as getting rid of something there now, but...
Can they get rid of them on our cleanup day?
That's what I was just wondering.
The Sibley County one, you can, yeah.
That's our Arlington Citywide cleanup day, too. It's June 24th.
Could we have a place that they could bring them until that time? Until then it's been shut?
Because then we, no, you're best bet letting them bring it down.
Yeah.
Yeah. At least Kirby's gonna have a little.
Yeah. Load them up in three months.
Yeah.
We can just remind people that we have a couple of bunches.
Right.
It's usually...
Good idea.
When you're taking them out, it's usually a big mess because you got to make sure you ran all the salt out of them.
Oh, yeah. And that, that resin tank is heavy.
Oh, it's heavy.
It's very heavy. It's like moving a refrigerator.
Yeah, it's, and usually the plastic tank is going to crack on it and it's going to drag a little bit. So it's their, their amount.
Well, probably just informing them then of the various options they have to get rid of it, so...
Well, I'll introduce resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two-one, a resolution waiving the building permit fee for water softener.
Councilmember Morgan introduced resolution twenty-two-one, twenty dash twenty-two-one, and seconded by Councilmember Batchor, and that is a resolution approving the water softener upgrade building permit waiver. Is there additional comments, questions? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bus?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie?
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed. The resolution is adopted. Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two-one, a resolution approving the application for lawful gambling permit for the Sibley County Agricultural Association.
We have that coming up on, let's see, May, highlight...
May 21st.
Is it May 21st or 30th?
That might be, yeah.
I was thinking May 12th when I glanced at this because I highlighted this resolution up.
Yeah, it says May 21st right there.
I just wanted to make sure on the application that it was the 21st and not the 22nd.
So this is a, a event that is being sponsored or being carried out by the Agricultural Association?
Yes.
As a fundraiser?
Bingo.
Okay.
First bingo.
First bingo?
All I have to do is resolution twenty-two twenty-two, approving the application for lawful gambling permit for the Sibley County Association.
Hold on a second.
Who is that, please? Craig? Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two-one, introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Bus, and that is for a resolution approving the application for lawful gambling permit for the Sibley County Agricultural Association for the date of May 21st. Any discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all, uh, we'll vote by roll call. Councilmember Bus?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie?
I will abstain.
Okay. Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one abstention. The resolution is adopted. All right, that is it for resolutions. Moving on, there was no unfinished business. Moving on to item fourteen, new business. Consider, reconsidering, I should say. We, this was brought up into discussion previously. The, we're giving the partial sewer expense for water main at the Valencia Estates.
We discussed this at a workshop. There's no way to exactly tell how much their sewer fence is for that water leak that happened on March 14th. But I had Lisa come up with some estimates for me, whether it would be on the high side, middle, or low. So it's up to council. Talking with Lisa, yes, you could go ahead and forgive any amount that you like. I did also pull in here some information. It was asked about, like someone else had the water running outside their house. What happened? However, was the late fee or was waiting and allowed for to set up a payment schedule? I found minutes from that.
I, I feel like we can't change what already we settled the past. We set a precedent there and, I mean, it really...
No, that, that one was tough. I mean, that, that was...
It all is. Every single one of these cases. I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, if that, if that the, I almost feel like we should probably look at it instead of being reactive when, when cases come up, that if this is something we want to change, we should look at policy and change the policy and have some leeway where we would be more flexible or move on sewer and take it off the sewer charges at least.
Well, I think in her case, in the, in the last one, from what I recall, we did waive the sewer charge because it was dripping outside.
Did we? Is that...
Not according, no, not according to them.
No, because that's not policy. I mean...
We did not.
Yes.
We could have though.
We waived her late fee.
Right.
Are you, well, I...
We did not waive it.
Yeah, because the issue was an outside faucet, which, none of that finds its way into the sanitary sewer.
It was an outside lawn. And I swear Lisa took the, I swear Lisa took the, the costs off there.
I thought that's what we did. I, we were wrong.
Well, but this is the notes. But I'm talking what, I, I don't know, I feel pretty strongly that Lisa went in and, and took the, the sewer part off and that she was charged for the water.
And, and, but you, you said you looked that up? So...
For the late fee.
Right, that's what the decision was. But in, in reality, is that what?
Well, they don't have authority to...
Yeah, that's true.
I was going to say, she could have forgiven it with a comment.
I mean, she could have.
She could have, but, okay.
I shouldn't know at all.
I guess there's... Yeah, there's no basis for that, then.
No.
Well, there has, and I guess that's where I'm at with my point. I mean, we do run across this, probably, I ran across it probably at least four times on Rich. But you've been sitting two, three, four, five times maybe over the course of maybe one year or something like that. And, you know, this has been, you know, two within a year, calendar year. But, you know, if that's something, and honestly, I think I would like to see some kind of flexibility, especially with sewer charges, when we know that it's a leak like that. But I don't feel comfortable doing it without people doing something in our policy.
But if you put it in policy, then are you giving up some flexibility? Because you're putting, you're putting parameters on it.
Writing.
Well, this really wasn't that much money. It was a hundred some bucks. The, the, the current one, right?
The current one.
It's not a huge amount.
It's not a huge amount. That's what I...
I think it was less than what hers was. I mean, this was...
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Well, and this was different because this was she left something on. And this was a break.
That was a leak, a break, which...
No, I don't know that she left it on. I think it was just a drip outside.
Well, she claimed that some kids in the neighborhood...
Yeah.
Turned it on. There was some...
That's what her claim was.
Yeah, a drip will add up. I mean, if you're gone for a couple of weeks, you get...
So I can't turn in my bill for thirty thousand dollars of water because of the leaky toilet? Aw, darn it.
Yeah, that's, that's...
That was me. I had thirty thousand gallons of water. Yeah, oh, well. That's water under the bridge.
Lot of water under the bridge.
Well, you were helping our salt stuff that, well...
Oh, yeah, I diluted it big time. Yeah, we diluted it big time.
So, back to this, this situation, this is different than the last one. So it's not apples to apples. That's why they're case by case. And it's not a huge dollar amount. As Joe said, on the low end, it would be forgiving ninety-two dollars. And on the high end, you'd be forgiving a hundred and forty-seven twenty. If you want to split it in the middle, you'd be forgiving a hundred and ten dollars and forty cents. Or you can forgive nothing.
I still got that lady, you know, her emotional reaction to the bill in my head. And it, for me, it's hard to, it's hard to waive this one after the last one.
Exactly.
So I don't, I don't think I could, I don't think I could be in favor of it.
Okay. I will, I will, I guess... Whoops, what was the motion? I didn't hear the...
That's right.
I, you know, the motion is to...
To deny?
To deny it. Yes. And now I'll have a water leak.
And Shelley, you?
Yep.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Batchor to deny the request of forgiveness of the sewer charges from Valencia Estates regarding a water leak. Additional discussion? Comments? If not, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no? Motion carried. Item fifteen, approve or deny sidewalk and curb replacement agreement with St. Paul's Lutheran School?
This is another case by case. We spoke about at, we discussed fairly fairly at a work session. And they applied for a permit. They came back with a quote from Mark Wenzler for, I have a copy of his quote, his quote was for thirty-eight fifty. And Attorney Arneson put together the attached agreement for the council to approve. They do like to go ahead and take half of the cost for them to put in. Basically, they're extending their bus loading and unloading area. And the direction they're extending it is fine with me from a zoning perspective because it's the opposite direction of where the fire hydrant is. So I have no issues with it from city code. It's just up to council if you are willing to pay for half. And you have that right under the city policies. The, the city council can pay for half.
So half is the number. I mean, were they asking for half, were they asking for a shared project or were they asking for half?
I think if the city would have been willing to pay for everything.
Yeah, well, for sure. So we're going...
And I did reach out to them that the city council would consider half.
Good.
I reached out to the school principal and said the city council would consider half.
Okay, open for discussion.
It's very helping people, but once you start doing it, it's going to go, other people are going to, and you're setting thresholds by saying, yeah, it might be...
I think, I think we, whether we go with this way or not, we go on to some programs, something to help pay for this kind of community improvement or...
We have funds. It would come out of the twenty-five thousand under the, the sidewalk. So that's where this money would come out of. So we already have funds in place. How you choose to use it is up to city council.
We never use it all anyways, I would. I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk and curb replacement agreement with St. Paul's Lutheran. Hold on a second.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Bus to approve the sidewalk and curb replacement agreement with St. Paul's Lutheran School. That being the city, or the city and the St. Paul's Lutheran would split the cost of three, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose no?
No.
I was going to abstain.
You abstain? Okay. So it'll be three votes in favor, one abstention, or one no, and one abstention. Motion passes.
Amy, with that money, if it doesn't get used, does it just keep rolling over? So how much is in that?
Well, it wasn't contracted in the past. So this is the first, this is, it just rolled over into the 401, the C I P fund. So this is the first year where we're breaking it down, keeping track of it.
Well, it might have rolled over from last year. We didn't spend any last year.
This week, Kirby did his own sidewalk job, can remember.
Oh, okay.
He did his own sidewalk last year.
All right, item sixteen, consider the MMPA EV charger.
This was brought up at the MMPA board meeting. Each community that's part of MMPA has the opportunity to bring an EV charger to your community. I haven't gotten a good response. I included all the emails, but the questions that I was asking so that you guys could see that some... and see the questions I was asking to MMPA, I don't feel like I've gotten a good handle on how much this is gonna cost us. I reached out to Kurt, Kurt about where can we equip this? And it came down to two locations, if we move ahead with it. MMPA is telling me they need a decision now, um, whether or not we're gonna move forward with it, but you saw the last email and I asked about costs.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of, I didn't feel like I.
They want us to do it, but they're not gonna tell us what.
I didn't feel like I got a good answer, I didn't think it did in there.
For the electricity to, uh.
To actually run it.
I'm guessing we do, we pay for the electricity and then we charge people or we don't.
There'd be a charge for.
There'd be a charge to use it.
Tapping, to use it.
So, there's a credit card machine on it or?
Yep, credit card or.
So, it's not free.
Well.
No, it's not free.
It's not a free, well, some communities were opting to do it for free, it's up to your community.
So, I know the one that is, the two of them that are going in in Hutchinson have a swipe for the card. And they are actually putting them down by the highway fifteen, uh, bridge, by the power plant.
Okay.
And.
I, I would think for us, it would be one of our, like, the parking lot that we always have to go to.
Across from the bakery.
Right, so if you're, you're thinking about who's gonna utilize one of these, like, if, if I were to go electric, which, that's probably not happening, but if I were, I'm not, I mean, where I live, am I gonna just drop my car off and let it charge and then walk my butt home, you know?
Honestly, where I think it makes most sense to put it is probably this parking lot right up here.
Well, there's security cameras here, which is another consideration.
Number one, number two, you have a restaurant right there, number three, you have sidewalks, so you can easily walk to another restaurant or something like that. Typically, when I see these things in like, in areas, they're usually by, uh, a hotel and or a, uh, restaurant at the very least.
It takes like up to four hours.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean, this is not a quick charge, they're, they make, they make half hour ones that are, you know, you see mega transformers sitting there to.
This would take about four hours.
So, I mean, it would be like a.
That's, yeah, it's after, I mean, that's your evening, you'd have to work, so I mean.
So, like by a hotel or something, it's always there.
You gotta go to the movie theater, catch a movie.
Well, then you gotta take a nap, in the meantime.
Go.
But that's why I was thinking that, you know, that parking lot, I mean, it's gonna be someone, it's, it's a different lifestyle having an electric car, this is my perception anyways, um, you know, the, the distance you can travel, the time that it takes to charge.
Who would we be servicing with something like that, that's not a quick charge? It would be somebody that lived in town, that probably lives in an apartment building that has no garage, that has no access to something like this.
They're gonna have an electric car.
Well, at some point, they're gonna make it mandatory, but.
Well, I think maybe a little more thought should have went into that buying the electric car.
Wouldn't be an apartment, they could have their own house.
Because, but I mean, you know what I'm saying, no, because if they lived here, well, does that make sense?
But, but it's gotta be, it's gotta be your access, so where is that? I mean, is it really our parking lot? I mean, can you spend four hours in the restaurant? I mean, is anyone staying in the motel, other than folks that are living there?
They don't wanna be driving home. How many, how many electric vehicles do we have in Arlington, the other Green Isle area?
I mean, I've seen one Tesla pass through, I don't know that they've lived here.
I have one owner in town.
We have one over by the hospital for sure.
Nessies have a couple.
Oh, they do, okay, so I think I have a few.
Are they hybrid or are they full electric?
Oh, they're hybrid, I think.
Yeah, so hybrid isn't.
Oh, that's right, that charges up.
Yeah, they're gonna charge themselves.
That's right. That's right, no, full electric.
Yeah, well, we're talking full alone, electric.
I just don't think it benefits our community that much yet.
Not yet, not yet, maybe ten years.
Well, maybe sooner than that, but.
And if they're pushing you without giving us, we should know the policy.
You know, what you saw, like, you need to.
I'm, I'm good with skipping.
Yeah.
Are, are there any environmental credits that the state is looking at, the option for?
Not that they have mentioned to me for this.
Cause I know with the one that I have been exposed with, there are environmental credits that they will be receiving for their carbon footprint.
Bellplane put one at their QuickTrip, I have never seen a vehicle plugged in at it, like, ever.
I, I think it's difficult.
It's a little premature, uh, at this, at this point. I think, you know, when Chevy goes, what is it, twenty thirty, they're not gonna produce an engine supposedly, we'll see how that works. But, I mean, it, it's gonna take time for people to, to really start, yeah, making that switch. And probably by then, the technology will come along a little bit longer and maybe you can get a little more range on it. But this thing could be worn out by then and nobody got any use out of it.
Can I say, can I say that the consensus of the council is to not do this?
Yeah.
Alright, that's a cons, that's a consensus of the council. Yeah.
But if we had forty people come in and sit down and say, hey, I don't want, I don't need it.
Well, right, I think it's different, I mean.
Most time we'll have all these people that say, well, you're not.
I don't think we will. Cause they're not gonna wanna leave your house.
Parking or office or something like that, right, when you go to work?
Put it at the dog park, yeah.
Something like that too, like, where do most people work? When you put one down by the school, because most people are coming to work in that area maybe.
Yeah, down the hospital.
Or in the hospital or. Right, so you want to see a location like that, cause then people could show up, club their car arrival at work and.
See, just, sometimes, cause even, even where I work at now, here I thought they had, uh, air, the air hole was coming from outside and when you're out there, here's.
You put it in front of that car and all, and put it where it's. I'm like, really?
Alright, let's move along, item number seventeen, uh, the hiring, conditional hiring or offer, I should say, uh, to patrolman Nathan Walton, uh, city administrator Newsome, what can you tell us about Mr. Walton?
Just to remind you, this would be conditional pending his background, he needs to have a thorough background, a physical and a psyche now.
Okay.
Uh, he is from Albertville, Minnesota. He is, uh, married, I can tell you that, cause he shared that with us, and he has six children. Uh, he's currently working for Hennepin County as a security officer. And he also works as a reserve officer for the Crystal Police Department. And he currently has his house up for sale, so he'd be looking to move, hopefully to Arlington. Twenty minute response, mm-hmm.
Okay, then the decision would be, uh, move ahead with offering a conditional, making a conditional offer to Nathan Walton as full-time police officer for the city of Arlington. Motion by council member, uh, Batchor, second by council member Sharpie to offer a conditional, or make a conditional offer to Nathan Walton for Arlington Police Patrolman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, motion carried. Alright, any committee updates that haven't been addressed so far? Have there been any committee meetings?
Just a reminder that we meet this Thursday here in Arlington for the AGI wastewater board.
Yeah.
That was for your benefit time.
Anybody wish to bring anything else up for open discussion?
There's two people up actually.
I am. Oh, alright, uh, anyway, this is.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by council member Batchor, second by council member Sharpie, I believe?
Correct.
To adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no, meeting adjourned at eight oh nine.